Two, one.
Recording in progress.
Call to order the town of New Windsor's work session for January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Before we go to approval of minutes, Mr. Clark Garber is here to receive a plaque for years of service. Clark, if you'd like to come up around here. Actually, a little history. I bought my first car from his dad. And it was a sixty-nine green, uh, Torino, green Torino. And we we able to deal with it a little bit, and his dad got me the right price. I'm not plugging anybody. Clark took over a few years ago from his dad. And has been a big part of our community. Just to let you know, Clark does give back to the community. The fire department just had their utility, uh, truck, uh, maintenance. I guess the annual.
Typical maintenance service.
Service. And he donated service for that, so we greatly appreciate that. On behalf of the mayor and council, the mayor and council recognizes Garber's Auto Moon Incorporated for their forty years of service, two thousand and twenty-two. And I'd just like to say, I think your dad, I know your dad would be very proud of you.
Well, I hope so. I just want to thank the town for, you know, the recognition and, you know, all the local people for their support. Without, without that, small businesses can't survive these days. Small towns need large businesses to thrive like that.
Yep, definitely.
We just appreciate all the local businesses.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, first agenda item, approval of minutes, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, work session, meeting minutes. I do have one thing down at the bottom. A motion at eight twenty-nine P. M. to close meeting was made. If we can have that to adjourn, sounds like we closed the meeting for a special meeting or something.
Yeah.
So if we could change that to adjourn the meeting, I don't want people to think, whether they read it or not, but it sounds like we went to closed session. We don't have any minutes from closed session, so. Do I hear a motion to approve with the correction?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
We have a motion and second with the amendment minutes for approval. All those in favor, sing five more, sing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry it. Thank you. Clark, you're more than welcome to stay, but you don't, you don't, you don't have to unless you've got something to bring up. I mean, if you've got to get home.
I really don't. I didn't want to just duck out the door.
If you did that, it's not being rude. We're probably going to have an exciting and, uh, meeting, but, uh.
So there's party afterwards?
No. Unless, unless you want to get back to the community a little bit more, then.
Well, again, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Clark.
See y'all later.
We'll see you soon. Rental housing application. I think everybody's had a chance to see that.
Yeah, so this was last reviewed and discussed at a previous council meeting. And the town staff also met to discuss and implement council and staff comments. An update, updated draft application was prepared and copies in the folder for tonight, which you see on the screen there. Clean is also working on a draft rental license, which we'll eventually need once we get this approved and, and in the works. So this is the latest greatest draft. And I think it addresses everyone's comments so far. That's where we are.
I have, I have, um, so we definitely changed the, the fee structure. My version online here says that the fee is twenty dollars per unit. I think that's what we agreed to. And it says after, after July thirty-first, the fee is fifty dollars per unit per day. Per day.
The goal being to get people to pay before July thirty-first.
I, I, right, I get that. But are we, are we really going to, uh, charge fifty dollars a day? And if so, do we really think we're going to be able to collect that? And if we do charge that and we do not collect that, what is the penalty? They can't rent their place?
If they haven't got a license, they can't rent. However you structure the fee. But if they, if they are renting without a license, that is a completely separate violation. That's a municipal citation violation.
Okay, so are we, are we all comfortable with fifty dollars a day? And are we, I mean, are we going to do that?
What, what happens and if they don't have a license?
Then if they never get a license, we will have to cite them and go through that process of citation, just like you do with any other violation. Zoning violation or whatever, they have to be cited, and the code specifies how well this has to be done. And then they have an opportunity to pay or to appeal. And if they appeal, we have to go to the district court. And if, as is just as likely, they completely ignore us, we have to go to the district court and file suit and have them properly served by the sheriff's office and all that process.
So Will and.
That's the only, I mean, that's the process that the state law establishes for municipal.
If, if we went through this process with a landlord, um, would they be responsible for the town's lawyer fees?
Probably not. I don't believe that's statutory.
Okay.
Then also, is there a timeframe if they're not paying that they no longer, they do not have a license? I mean.
Well, if they're not given a license, the timeframe is as soon as we send them a bill that they don't pay. If they're not, if, let's just say someone gets a bill and they're not renting. Well, that's on the app. There's a process for them to say, we used to rent it, or my mother-in-law is living in it now, and we're not charging her rent. That's, that's a separate process.
Right.
But in the event, and I'm, we'll have a list of however many, pick a number, twenty landlords that get this invoice. Because I think that's the contemplation is initially to send out invoices. And eighteen of them pay, and two of them don't. I would imagine we would do what we usually do with miscreants, which is write a letter saying, ah, you probably forgot. But you, you know, don't forget, we need to have a license within, you know, you need to come in with a certain period of time. If they still don't, just like any other violation, we have to cite them. And that's the process, and that I imagine would be done with Joan. And she would start it, and if we have to go to court, we have to go to court.
What, what would be your opinion on after July thirty-first, instead of the fifty dollar per unit per day, that they are then deemed unlicensed?
Well, we could, we could put that in. But frankly, I would rather, if you want to, if you want to reduce that or modify that somehow. We, we struggled with this part quite a bit, the, the, you know, four or five of us who were talking about this. This is the best way to do it.
But then I get back to my question. When do we notify them that they are not?
Well, we would notify them, I would, I would suggest, what's the date? The second of, of August or whatever. If you, if you're not paid, if you're due and you have not paid by July thirty-first, I think that would be the trigger.
Right.
So on the first of August, we can, we can cite them. I mean, we cannot charge them extra. Or we can cite them, or I think that, and I'm not speaking for anybody, but with my understanding, a lot of times when your bill is going up on Friday, you manage to get your bill paid on Thursday. And I think that most of your people, you, they're going to be notified in advance. We even talked about having a meeting with the landlords to discuss it. And frankly, if they all come in and say, this is unworkable for us, we want to start on September first, or, you know, we can do that. It's, it's all our, it's all our game. But, um, I have no way of knowing which is more productive. I just don't know. So that was just a proposal to jack it up. Now, maybe you, maybe you don't jack it up that much, or you say fifty dollars a month, but you want people to pay the darn twenty dollars. And that's the philosophy, but I don't make policy.
So, so as I was running through the scenarios in my head when I, when I read that, and I know we talked about it, and maybe I just wasn't thinking the fifty dollars a day when we said we were going to rent. But so, so I look at it as if the, if a landlord doesn't pay it, and come July thirty-first, we start hitting them with fifty dollars a day. Okay? And we're sending them notices, now you owe a thousand dollars, or fifteen hundred dollars, or whatever it is, three hundred dollars. He is not going to say, hey, I'm just not going to, I'm not going to rent my place anymore. Because he's already got renters there, and he's not going to be able to evict them. Right? He's not going to like turn and say, sorry, the town's charging me fifty bucks a day, you're out on the street. Because it doesn't work that way. Right? So he can't do that either. He can't just throw them out.
He can throw them out if they don't, if the municipality requires a license and he doesn't have one. That's an illegal business. Because renting is an illegal business.
So he could just.
I think he could. We don't want him to.
I mean, we don't, I mean, I just said, we don't want any of that to happen.
No, that's definitely not the goal.
Yeah.
The goal is just to get a handle on who's renting.
It's incentives to pay it on time.
I think the best case scenario is that twenty dollars is very.
That's why twenty dollars was picked.
Very reasonable. I'm going to go ahead and pay it.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's.
Okay.
The good best case scenario, but.
Maybe we could just change the amount and make the timeframe longer, like make it a hundred dollars a month or something like that.
That's an accurate.
I was thinking even fifty dollars.
Almost like a late fee kind of thing. I mean, fifty dollars a day, I mean, what if you forgot? And, you know, I don't know, I'm not.
Well, the thing is, the notification isn't going to get to them until like three, four days later, U. S. mail.
Right, true, yeah.
So by that time, you're already, you could be, you know, a hundred dollars in the hole.
Yeah.
And let me ask you this. So he doesn't pay, he or she doesn't pay the twenty, twenty dollars fee, and then they're into the fifty dollars per day. If they came in and said, oh, my God, can't believe we did this, can we just settle on a, would we be willing to nego, kind of waive that fifty dollars if they're in good faith within a couple of days?
I would say so.
We always are with just about everything else.
So to that, to that end, I think it's just the teeth to get them to that point. That's what I see, the fifty dollars a day. I think when we discussed this, we almost assumed that we hoped that it wouldn't get to a battle over fifty dollars, because that wouldn't make sense. Why just pay the twenty bucks? Come in and say, I'm late, and pay the twenty bucks instead of paying the fifty.
And they won't, they, it's not like they're going to, the bill's going to be due on the first, and we jump it up on the fifth.
Right.
They have two full months to show up and pay their twenty dollars.
Right. The, the other.
So the fifty was definitely a scary number.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was the thought. But again, that was just our thought.
If we get this out to them before that, they, they're going to have three or four months.
Yeah.
Second part of that is, you brought up a point, and then we actually have us, uh, an option here. What if there's somebody that is just, I'm not paying this? And then they say, I'm renting. How do, how do we investigate somebody that is, you know what I'm asking?
I know exactly what you're asking, and it is very thorny. But, um, I don't know how much investigation we would do, though my suspicion is a landlord of, of that.
Character.
Temperament would probably have renters who are more than happy to rat him out.
Uh, or neighbors.
Or neighbors, or a sheriff's deputy, or anybody, because that is probably a property with which we are familiar.
Okay.
Well, my, my kind of question along with that was the, actually the opposite of it. It says in the last sentence of that, if the rental status changes, it's your obligation as an owner to notify town hall. Same thing could happen. You could be renting to, you know, grandmother, and then things change, and two years down the line, you're not going to know. But the town's also not going to be able to investigate that and say, oh, now you're renting to Billy Bob, pay your twenty bucks.
We've done this out every year, no matter what, right?
Two years, it's a two year.
It's a two-year, um, license, but.
But would you send it out?
With, with, that's the thing. Procedurally, the procedural folks talked about this. Because I could buy a house off, off schedule, and, you know, so I'm going to come in and need to get a license. And if I buy my house in November to rent, I'm clearly not in the June one, and I need to do something between now. And I can't forget, you are going to have to explain how, where you landed with that.
So we did it, so the two-year period, so if August first comes and Michelle buys a rental property, we were going to, um, prorate it to give it a discount based on a year. So the, in that first year, it was going to be ten dollars. And then if it's the second half, the second year, the first half, it was going to be, or maybe, oh, sorry, it's going to be fifteen dollars. The first half of the second year, it was going to be ten, and then the end of the second year, it was going to be five. So all the invoices get sent out at the same time. So it's not like one year I'm sending out five invoices, the next year, it's, that's too complicated. Just prorate it and make it easy for everybody.
Which is fine. And my, my question, though, is, is with the exemption. If somebody puts in an exemption, do they get dropped off of that list of rental properties? Because in, in my situation, when I bought my house, I, I knew that it was rented before me. When I bought it, I, I live in the house now. It's not a rental property. But would I still be getting these, these emails every two years, or are these, um, um, letters?
I'm looking to the administrative people.
You, you should, in two years, take a look at.
Yeah.
The property.
And then the new owner in this case says, I'm.
He'll form out again, yeah.
I'm living here. Yeah, you send the application back and you don't get a fee.
Yeah, I think that's just practically what they would do.
Yeah, I was just saying, do they drop off of the list?
No, the answer is no, they won't drop off the list.
So not until you get that.
Not until like an owner changes or something.
Yeah, you get that and says, hey.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we could keep a record, I mean, we could keep a record anyway.
Sure.
But if you knew, if you knew somebody, say, bought a two-apartment building, you're going to, and then they turn it into one single dwelling, you're probably going to know that.
Yeah. You know? And war bills are going to be different and, and everything.
They're going to, they're going to call up and say, not in.
You're a small enough jurisdiction that.
It's pretty easy.
These theoretical questions are perfectly valid and, and, and need to be thought about. But you're going, I think it's going to be easier to get a handle on it in practice than it is, because when you guys were talking about that five, fifteen, two months, six months, I just sat there and I said. But they had it, they, they had it down, so.
It's administrative.
So I think that's, I think that's how it's going to work. And I think after it works for a little while, and people, it's just going to be another thing that people do. I just feel like that's a little too harsh, fifty dollars per day.
Especially like Will said, you know, they're not going to, depending on the mail, it could be two weeks.
Who knows? God. Especially the mail out here.
I would rather change the amount, like make the amount higher, but a longer timeframe.
Hundred dollars a month.
Hundred dollars for a month or something like that. The same thing, if they come in and say, I just got this, then you're.
Hundred dollars a month, everybody agreeable?
That works for me.
I think that's good.
And then, then the other thing, should we, if, if it's not paid by July thirty-first, then they are in violation or not eligible to rent? I mean, does that have a little more impact?
You mean to put a sentence like that right in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because if they see where they're not going to be able to rent or be in violation, then that might speed them up a little bit. I don't know.
I agree.
You're in violation and your rental license is invalid.
And revoked or will be revoked or.
Has this been something that they've done, you've done before, or is this a brand-new thing, or?
It's a brand-new thing for New Windsor.
In New Windsor.
Almost everywhere else has been doing it for a while.
Westminster went round and round for, of course, their, their fees were.
Yeah.
Pretty high.
Their fees were higher, and there's a lot more of them.
Oh, yeah.
It was a lot bigger of a place.
They had Far Hall.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That time.
We're not trying to make money off of this. It's just a registration vehicle, that's all.
So you know, who owns these properties?
Yeah, exactly, so we know.
If you ever need the, the information's there. That was the main reason why we started.
If it's emergency.
It's really more for emergencies, especially if the owner of the property is in Brazil.
Right.
You know, you want.
You've got to have that other person.
Yeah.
It says within fifty miles of town.
Dana, you have a pretty good list of rental units now? So would it be beneficial, you think we can get this? I think, I mean, everybody's agreeable to those two changes, additions, that we try to have this voted on at the February meeting and notify all of the rental properties? That it'll be at least discussed or something, that if they want to come and point something out?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
At a public, at a council meeting.
But at a regular meeting, not a separate meeting.
Invite them to a meeting to comment.
That way they can't say they were blindsided.
Nobody told them.
Nobody told me.
We planned to send out a letter to all, to the, all the property or rental owners.
And there, there may be something on their side that they would like, you know?
Fourth of February or whatever.
I think we vote on it at, at February.
Well, that's the intent, but however, if some, well, we could still do it even if somebody made a valid point that we didn't think about.
It's their business. They know more about how it operates than we do.
And I think we should include them.
In the process.
So that's why I'm wondering if we want to try and do that at the work session in February.
If they don't show up, that's on them.
Yeah.
Let's do it at the work session.
Invite them to the meeting and vote on it at the work session.
Get letters prepared and mailed out.
That works.
Give them time to get to the.
And to look at their calendar.
February work session versus the.
Now, the letter you send everybody, is that going to have this in there?
The draft of the, the, this.
Yeah, we can do that.
With the changes.
Yeah, the.
Cash is a proposed.
Right, this is a draft or proposal.
What's it, twenty or twenty, I don't know.
It's not that many. I don't know. Do you know?
Two of them have majority.
Probably twenty.
Yeah, I don't really know.
It's like you said, some of them have multiple.
Oh, yeah.
Multiple, uh.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody good?
Good.
All right. BZA fees, proposed increase.
So, uh, so requests for board of zoning appeals are, are few and far between for the town. I've not done one in my four and a half years. I don't remember when the last one was, but ten-plus years at least.
I think the last one was Hubers.
So I, I do have knowledge that there may be a request for a variance submitted in the near future. So in checking the town files for the application and the information needed, I came across a, a, an old version of the BZA cost fees justification document, whatever. Noticed that they were, uh, were outdated and need updated. So what I have here is what they were previously, going back several years, to what I have here, proposed. It's a net increase of a hundred and eleven dollars, which, considering inflation, is, is really not much of an adjustment. You'll see under the, um, the BZA members, previously paid at the top, you can see fifteen dollars if they were to meet, which they are supposed to meet one time a year, no matter what.
They actually should, and on that, on that, temporarily aside, we need to make sure that we actually have active members whose term hasn't lapsed or anything like that.
Well, they all have.
That's, yeah, I wasn't going to say that.
But one has agreed, and, well, two, one, I know passed away.
I was going to say, yeah, one, one is no longer available.
But I had four names given to me, but we only need three, correct?
Unless you want to name an alternate. But frankly, given the fact that we haven't had a meeting in four years.
Since, since the one person's been deceased for.
Yeah, a while.
Four years, probably. You know? So, um, I, I think we'll have three. One, two, I'm sure, pretty sure Will.
Will, yeah.
Agree to continue. And I mean, and we, maybe we put that on for the February meeting. I'll have the three names.
Okay. I didn't mean to pick you up task, I just thought of it.
But on, on this, um, not that it's been a big increase, and, but do we want to do like our water and sewer annual increase of, because you're going to have increased in salaries every year, probably, give or take. Not dramatic, but especially for only a year or two.
Like an automatic.
But do we, that way we don't have to come back every year and.
In other words, the, like, it would automatically increase every year.
Every fiscal year, like, five, up by five dollars or, yeah.
You know, you could do it that way. Uh, I think what's really going to advertise, what's going to increase the most is your advertising costs.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so you might want to put, like now Gary's got.
Two hundred.
Advertising costs. Maybe you do for that kind of what he's proposed, or we've discussed, doing for the attorney's fees. Because you, you guys should not be absorbing that. That should be your applicant.
Right.
But to put advertising costs at a minimum of two hundred dollars.
Of more.
But, you know, actual costs are the responsibility.
Can we, in the motion, can we just say that annual increase to actual cost?
You, you could, and if that's in your resolution, because I think all of this needs to be done by resolution, um, that would have to be in the resolution. And then whenever it came up.
You just.
Somebody would call whoever we call and find out how it would have ridiculous amount. It's assuming that the state law doesn't change, and it's proposed to change a lot, like every year, on what requires newspaper advertising.
Going to say, I don't know how much longer we're going to have a newspaper.
Yeah, well, we don't have a newspaper. We have the Baltimore Sun with a headline that says Carroll County Times.
And probably more people look at social media than the Carroll County.
Oh, yeah.
We could be paying, but we could be paying for ads on that.
But maybe, maybe have it where, where actual cost.
Actual advertising costs, you know, will be, yeah. I think that's probably the way to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
No question. Can you explain the, the BZA? I, I'm, I'm not.
I don't, I don't really understand.
Well, let me, let me try and do a, a brief.
Okay.
I'm more than happy to do a more complex.
Sure.
But.
We'll take the bridge version.
Yeah, the Reader's Digest version. The, um, the state law provides for local governments to create a board to hear certain zoning and land use-related items, different from the planning commission.
Right.
They hear appeals of your zoning administrator, and they hear certain specific types of authorizations for use. That's what Hubers was. And they hear things like variances. The law requires that I have five feet between my shed and my property line, and my lot isn't big enough, so please let me put my shed here instead of here. But those are the things that are generally heard by a board of zoning appeals. Now, there are some things that can be heard just by your zoning administrator, but the process for notification of the neighbors and everything else is the same, whether your zoning administrator hears it or your full BZA hears it. You don't have that many, you just don't have that many issues that come up. I think the school, when the school changed, we had a BZA hearing because we, the, we had to make housing at the school, potential housing at the school was one of the issues, and I think some of the staff was going to live there. I don't recall it exactly, but that may be the last one we had.
I thought that was just a, a amendment.
No, I think we did an amendment that required them to go to the BZA, and then they went to the BZA.
To educational.
Yeah, but there was a text amendment.
Yeah, text.
But there was something else that required them to go to the BZA. Hubers, for example, with the sign issue, ultimately, Will, and I don't know where they are, and I mean, Bill's probably been talking to them about that. Those are the kinds of things that go to the board of zoning appeals. It is controlled largely by the state statute, but we have our own, our own law that essentially reflects the, the state law. You can, you can be more lax than the state, or less lax than the state law, but you cannot be more lax than the state law and all those sorts of things. But that's what the, what the BZA is. So for a variance, which I believe is what may be coming up, lot size, you know, it just doesn't work. There's standards that an applicant has to meet and has to convince the board of zoning appeals, which is what we call a quasi-judicial body of, that, that he meets the legal standard to be granted a variance. And that's quite specific, and there's probably no fewer than ten thousand cases in the last fifty years on variances and BZA appeals. And it's a, it's a very large, um, body of law that thankfully we don't have to deal with a lot out here. But, um. But, um, that's what your BZI is. So if somebody wants variance, they've got to go through a process, and the process involves the BZI, and all of, all of those things are required by the law, uh, including the, the newspaper thing, which is one of the biggies. But everything, everything here is just too low, I mean, you know, nobody's looked at it in a long time.
They're not mad to.
Yeah, well, that's not a bad thing.
No.
But, uh, yeah, but you, again, the town should not be absorbing the cost. The applicant should be absorbing the cost.
I think where you see it is more probably in your, uh, economic arena of businesses, and somebody wants to change the current business to something else, and it's not allowed or not usable, you know.
Carroll County, for example, has a BZI that meets every single month for several days every month, they have that many hearings.
Right.
We just don't.
Yeah.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, though, but the process is gen, is, is, is the same, but in some cases, uh, the zoning administrator can.
Yes.
Handle the process.
In the, in the more limited, smaller cases, the change of, of use of a piece of property cannot be handled by a zoning administrator. That requires the full board. What the, what the ZA can do are more, again, administrative things, largely variances. That's most of what.
Side yard, set back or front yard, set back.
Now, like, like our sign ordinance is what, four by eight? Four by eight, is it?
I, it depends, our sign ordinance is all over the place.
But let's say if it was four by eight.
Let's say it's four by.
I wanted to put up a four by ten.
Right.
Could.
The zoning administrator can have that hearing.
Okay.
Because it's, it's one of the size requirements for, it's a variance hearing, it's just a variance to that size.
Not going to change.
It does not change the statute at all. And it doesn't change the use on the property.
My neighbor's not going to be upset from a four by eight to four by ten.
Well, he might be, and if he is, he has a right to come to the hearing with the zoning administrator and CARP.
All the adjoining properties.
Yeah, everybody, all the adjoining properties have to be notified.
Process, other than the fact that you may have a BZI hearing or may not.
Right.
It still has to be advertised.
Oh, yeah, and the property has to be posted, so that you will see, and this always amuses me, um, you will see the sign go up that nobody can read unless they pull off the road and park their car and go up and read it. But, um, but you know it's there, and if you want to, if you're curious enough, you park your car and you go up and read it.
Yeah.
Um, there's one on Main Street in Westminster now that I keep trying to figure out what it's for. I'm going to just have to park my car.
Valley, there's one, the, so, a church wants to.
Yeah.
Build there.
And really, all you can see is, is the title of which, which group it is.
Date, and that's about it.
Yeah, and that's about it.
All right, so you have the.
So that's why we need to change these fees, because that's what a BZI is.
You're, you're going to work on an ordinance?
We'll put together a resolution, I don't think it's, it needs an ordinance, I think it just needs a resolution.
The resolution, uh, the first thing I, I put in there was that, um, I, I changed the stipend for the BZI members up to thirty-five, um, from fifteen. I'm proposing that pay increase is a minor increase, it's not going to make or break our, our budget, but I believe a resolution is required to change this, or is that.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think it is.
Okay.
And are we changing the newspaper advertising cost? I kind of lost me on that.
And you want to just say two hundred dollars of our actual cost?
Same thing with the lawyer, right?
Yeah, well, that, we've got that up there, we've got a minimum for the lawyer.
Up top to basically two hour minimum, but then they're responsible if additional fees are necessary. If it's, it's a very simple, uh, process, two hours is probably it.
Yeah, it's going to be enough.
This, this is, this is a minimum.
This is a minimum, basically, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
So if, if y'all are good with this, we'll go ahead and we'll put it in a resolution form, that we should be able to get in by the February. I don't want to volunteer you, but we, we should be able to do that, right?
All right, Maryland thirty-one, Water Main Improvement.
Give me one second.
Informational meeting. Public notice, everybody see that?
Yeah, this was a draft, um, draft, uh, public notice that we're going to have, um, going out. So we do have our, we do have our, um, uh, reached out to sixteen pertinent staff, elected officials, representatives involved with the Water Main Project to, um, schedule a public information meeting. Uh, the consensus of the, of the sixteen folks was Thursday, February twenty-third at seven P.M. At the New Windsor Fire Department, and address I'm listing is one oh one Water Street, because we want people coming in off of Water Street Park, I believe. So the anticipated format is going to be a, basically a station, station, uh, setup.
You have one oh one Water Street?
That's the address that comes up when you.
Oh, High Street. One oh one High Street.
But there's no parking, you can't park if you get up.
Water cell back.
You got to come in off of water, so maybe this should just say.
If they, if we open the, the gate.
The gate, yeah.
The gate will be open.
Oh, I've never, I've never been there when the gate was open, I've always had to go around.
Every Tuesday night, bingo.
Bingo.
See, I.
It's open right now.
I'm not a gambling girl.
It'll be open that, that day.
Too cheap to be a gambler.
High Street, they won't know where one oh one Water Street is, one oh one High Street.
So we're going to anticipate having tables set up for the town. GMB, the engineer, uh, Mid-Atlantic, the contractor, WBCM inspector, S.H.A. will be there. Um, so we need some, some specific discussion, um, regarding when the residents would ver, visit those stations. I think, Neil, you had mentioned.
Well, what, what, what we did for Lehigh Quarry, I don't know how many of you attended that, but they had stations and, and maybe at seven o'clock, I'd just say, you know, welcome, thank you for coming, you know, we have these stations, name them all, and you're more than welcome for the next half hour to go and visit them, ask questions without having to ask them in public if you don't feel comfortable, this way you can get one oh one answers, um, and then we will address more issues at seven thirty. And explain the process of what's, what's going to be taking place by that time, hopefully the contractor will have some kind of timeline. Hopefully he'll have that up there, um, and, and that's, you know, always going to be up for change, but. Um, and then, you know, the process of, of calling in for questions, not to contact the contractors, that's not their, their job, unless it's something, you know.
I generate that.
You know, I need to get my car out of the driveway by six o'clock, are you going to be out of the way?
On its way.
Okay, but anything, you know, they, they need to contact Town Hall, so that it doesn't get out of hand, and, and there's been timed cases where people in other communities have jumped on the contractor, and that doesn't sit well. So, um, you know, we just, and we'll just ask everybody to be understanding and respectful during this process. And that sort of thing, but we'll have, you know, we may have, you know, question and answer afterwards. Let any, let everybody ask as much as possible, because I've had a couple of questions already about the water meters are in the basement, they're going to be taken out, because I know some people like to see the meter down there in case they have a leak. They can check it every now and then, if they see it running, they got a leak, so, well, not, you know, they'll have that option to maintain it, or.
Well, they. Well, my, the option can be there, um, my preference is to get it out.
Understand.
Um, if they're going to keep it, they're going to have to sign off and saying it's their responsibility. And I'd really rather not generate another set of documents that need to be signed by the seventy-five or eighty homes at front on this property.
You can see them in curb, you can see them in curb stops, too. And if you could open a curb stop, you could see the meter.
No, not the curb, the vault.
A curb vault, my bad, my bad.
Vault, you can.
So that was going to be, that was going to be my, my question, Gary.
Well, they're not allowed to go into it, it's town property.
Yeah. Look, so, uh, that's, that's interesting that you brought that up, because I got my water bill the other day, and I used three times my normal amount of water, three times, and we didn't do anything.
Washing that beard.
No, it wasn't washing the beard, I have, I believe I have a leak at my outside faucet, it's up by my garage, and I had turned it off late November, early December, but for those first two months.
Frozen?
No, it didn't freeze, I apparently was, I'm blowing water out underground somewhere.
Yeah, we are the same.
And I checked my water meter when the, when the bill came, and I was like, what the heck, and I went on, it was read correctly, and I've been monitoring it now, and my usage is back to normal. But I would have never known if I don't have, well, how, how would a homeowner know if they don't have access to see something now? Yeah, and that's the first thing that, that Debbie said to me, well, how would we know when we take that out? You know, because we're checking it now, because, you know, we got a huge water bill.
It's kept in, it's just that.
Well, in, instead of individuals, couldn't we come up with an ordinance that if someone requested to keep it, that it automatically becomes their property, instead of having to have everybody sign something?
But if it's their property, then they can just remove it if they want to.
Why?
I don't know.
It's good lawyer talk, right?
Look at her face.
Oh, well, it's, it's the instinct, because if they own it.
I'll just remove it, then.
They can mess with it, they can break it, they can claim that you can't come in and read it.
I don't care what they do with it, quite honestly.
Well, if you don't care.
If it comes to be, it's, we're going to, everybody's going to have an outside meter, okay?
Oh, you're saying as a secondary, but that's going to be inaccurate.
I was going to say, how can that work?
Could be inaccurate.
Could be inaccurate, but over time, they stop working and they become.
So, so the meter at your garage is not the only meter.
No, it's a faucet.
There's going to be one at the curb and then one at your basement.
Got one that your guys can ride around with their zooming machine and see what it reads. Then I don't care who owns the one.
They would just have to sign a, a thing that says if it starts leaking.
Yeah, it's not your, it's not our problem. Uh, okay, now, now I understand better, I don't care. Uh, it's just if, if it was going to be the only thing that we had, that we were basing our billing information on, that we didn't have any control over and didn't own, I don't like that. But if it's just a matter of essentially seeding that unit, C-E-D-ing that unit to an owner as opposed to requiring them to take it out, if the technology is such that you can have two meters.
Well, there, there's technology already that you can, you can install a, um, automatic shut off if, and, and it'll monitor all your usage come through, sent to your phone, and then if it sees a leak, it'll shut it off automatically, that a homeowner could do right now. Um, I think that's probably going to be the better solution.
So Gary, that could save, actually save the town some money, right, of that plumber feeck that we would, the town would be picking up, coming into the house and removing that, that meter. The homeowner would have to realize, understand that it's, it's mine now, if it breaks, if it leaks, it's, it's on, it's on me. But other than that, it could save, and, and the town would still come along and remove the electronic reader that's on the house.
Right.
And it would just be a inline meter in my house, that's all.
Yeah, so the plan, to back up a little bit, the plan ultimately is to, the town to hire a plumber to go in after everything's been upgraded, the new laterals are put in, the meter vaults are put in, and have a scheduled service where a plumber goes in and removes that meter and straight pipes it through and takes the meter out, and then it's, it's out. And that would, in the cases of whoever, however many there are that decide they want to keep it, it would save.
And then, and then maybe the ordinance, if we did an ordinance covering all this, that the town property, or the town's responsibility ends at the vault.
So we just had our meter done, so are you saying that once the Maryland thirty-one line is put in, they're going to come in and redo the meter again?
Take it out.
Oh, they're going to take it out.
There's going to be a new meter installed at the curb.
In a vault.
Okay, after the thirty-one project, even though they were just in my house the other day and working on the meter there. Okay, so.
You understand?
I, I think so.
It's going to be a couple of years before that all happens, and you have to have a meter, so.
Yeah, and there would have to be an understanding that the meter at the, at the curb vault
Is the.
Trumps any, you know, well, my meter inside said I used four gallons.
That was going to be my question.
Stops at, at vault.
I do like the idea of the move, because it can define the public-private demarcation that means.
So if your meter says something different than the vault one, too bad.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But how, how, so, I mean, that could be more discussion later, but my, my only concern, though, is you're, you're going to get confrontations of, because the, when they slow down and they start reading less, and they say, well, your, your meter says I, I have this much, and I, I only, um, a thousand gallons less, how, how does that get? I mean, they could send a crew out, plumber can inspect underground and say, everything's fine there, and then how do you, how do you resolve that confrontation of, you're saying I did this, I'm saying you did this, I think you're overcharging me.
I think that that is one of the reasons why you do an ordinance, and it specifies, and you can try and explain to people that this is, oh, this is new technology, you're, yours is old technology, it's, may not be functioning properly. It's your responsibility, it's not ours, we can't do anything about it. Um, if the alternative is to leave functioning, or as the only functioning meter in somebody's basement, I don't think that, I think that's a bad plan.
Get a new meter and a new vault.
Come hell or high waters, so.
Well, if you want to have the town's vault certified, it'll be on your cost.
Yeah, the, the, the vault is going, at the, at the.
What do you mean, to have somebody come back and check and make sure?
Using less than what we're saying.
Uh-huh.
It'll be up to him, not up to us, it'll be up to him.
He has to prove he's right.
And the town's.
And the town, and you don't have to prove that you're right.
Sure.
Because if not, we'll be going out the other week.
That's right, that's, yeah.
Meters can be tested.
Right.
In a factory.
Right.
But it's a cost, and that cost.
And I think we, we already, I want to say we already have that in place.
I, at, at the county, in the, the years I worked at the county, it was done maybe one time.
Yeah, but I, I want to say we.
And it was accurate.
We put that in place, we may have just talked about it, but I want to say, I mean, around Frank's time, that if somebody wanted to contest it, it was going to be on them. Because it might even been pre-Frank, and it was Jack's.
Yeah, I, I don't remember that, but that doesn't, if that's an in-house thing.
Somebody disagrees, then it's, it's on them to.
To, to spend more than the water bill discrepancy is probably, trying to figure out whose meter is right.
Is there another option for homeowners to be able to monitor their water usage in their, in their home?
Yes, they, they have ones that you can actually plow, plum into the line and actually shut it off. They have actually these electrodes that wrap around the line and, and just feel the flow. Um, they're a little less accurate, but there is, because I actually, I was going to buy one that automatically shuts off, and it tells you your daily gallon, your hourly gallon, it'll tell you if there's a slow leak, a large leak.
So you can install that, we don't install.
That's the owner, a homeowner.
That's the thing that runs them up in the, in the guy who's the mayhem. I've seen the commercial, um, your, your wa, your water shut off isn't working, because I'm not working, and there's water flying everywhere, okay?
But I, I think the technology, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but the technology for these meters is so well advanced that.
They're way more certified than anything that you buy.
I mean, they're going to be accurate.
Put all the private devices you want on your inside meter, I'm reading the meter at the vault, and that's.
Right.
That's what you're getting built for.
So, so, uh, to, totally in agreement with, with all of that, I am just looking for.
The option.
How do I monitor?
How, how can a homeowner now monitor it relatively accurately? Not to contest, I'm not looking to contest what's at the vault, I'm looking to.
You don't want a seven hundred dollar water bill.
I, I had, I had twenty thousand gallons of water spew out somewhere.
Yeah, he doesn't want to wait the three months, he wants to, he wants to find that within a week.
Been there, did that.
So.
I had a seven hundred dollar water bill.
No idea where it is.
And it was, mine was.
Same thing, it was a pipe going under the lawn to the garage, and it was leaking for months, and Donna called me up and said, ah, Kim.
Yeah, so.
Surprise.
Okay, well, I, I was just thinking if there was, if there was a something, some kind of technology that we could point citizens to.
Tell people.
And get rid of the meters, because I don't want people contest, my, my meter, and then we got to go through, they, you know, well, the meters are old and they don't work, you know. All the meters go away, but if someone is interested, you could use this tech.
Other technology.
I was just looking for that.
Not recommending it, but FYI-ing it.
Oh, there's a whole bunch. I mean, there's fifty dollar ones that just wrap on, there's five hundred dollar ones that do everything.
Meters has its own frequency? For what Wayne, when Wayne goes around. For what Wayne, when Wayne goes around.
The radio reads have a frequency.
Had the fre, yeah, had the frequency, not the meter. The meter's wired to the, the radio read is wired to the meter, but the, the radio read sends the signal to the.
To your point, the meter, if you do have, and that's how the electrode ones work, is it, it feels the noise of the water flowing through it.
No, but what I'm saying is when Wayne goes in his, in his truck.
Oh, okay.
He's going by my house. And there's a frequency or something that says four twelve Church Street.
That's different from four ten Church Street.
Right.
And the current reading of the meter.
Right, so is there technology? That I could? Go on a website? I know this is kinda farfetched, but in today's society, I don't know if it is farfetched, that I could see. I mean, we can see what's going on at the water and sewer facilities.
Oh, you mean like put everybody's reading someplace?
Right, but that technology is there, is what I'm saying.
He only reads it one, once a quarter, though.
Right.
To get.
The way I could read it every day if I wanted.
But you know, because you would need the, you would need the actual meter that authenticates with it, and that's, you know, that's probably a thousand dollar meter. Reader, you know.
But I'm just saying sooner or later, the technology's gotta be there.
But, but there, there is technology already to do the, they're monitoring water usage is, is. They have it at Lowe's, actually, it's like a hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
I'm just wondering, is, is, it's a, it's a can of worms, maybe, um, do we wanna even offer that? Keeping your meter, is it gonna cause the town more problems in the long run, or is it just, it's yours? It's on, on your shoulders and it's.
They should sign, they should at least sign something that says if it starts leaking, we're not going to replace it.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's more than that, Will, it's, the town's responsibility ends at the vault, so anything from the vault.
That's already in the code.
Then, then it's, it's on them, right?
I, I, I think this is another situation where you'll have a few people. Who know sure and certain that you're up to something. And so they wanna know how much water they're using, but. I wouldn't begin to have the slightest idea where mine even is in a house I've lived in thirty-two years.
It's in the basement more than.
It's probably somewhere down there, I don't know. But my point is, I think this is, is worthwhile to think about, but I don't think it's really gonna be. Maybe you know, maybe your people are more nervous than I am, but.
The houses are we talking about?
Yeah.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, so if, if, even if ten percent of them wanna keep an old meter in their basement so they can look at it. It's not that many people, it's not gonna be that big an issue.
But to Dave's point, the, it's pretty standard practice everywhere that it's up to the meters, what the town's responsible, after it. So if we change it to the curb, and I don't even know if it's in the current code, I, I don't know if we'd had to put something else, but. If you move it out to the curb, up to that meter, cuz that's the meter we're using.
It's a whole lot cleaner than having the meters in the house.
It should already be there.
Well, yeah, you say it's not yours, but that's, that's yours, and this somehow isn't yours, and then this is yours again, so, um.
Inside meters are not the way it's done.
It's done.
The way it was done, it's not the way it's done today, and it's that reason for liability.
Well, so nobody's arguing that, nobody's arguing that.
Yeah, no.
We're all on board with the vault and the, and the responsibility. But, um, you know, happenstance that it came up for me at this time, but someone else could answer it at our public information meeting.
Yep.
And we need to have, we need to be prepared to have a response for that. And if our response is, you can keep your meter, you'll sign a thing, it's on you, fine. If there's something better that we could propose for the citizens and we don't want to. Offer the keep your meter, um, maybe that would be even better, but I don't know.
I mean, we have to be careful not to be recommending something, you know.
Right.
Has to be like an FYI, there is this technology available.
There are a variety of options that might be available for you to shop.
And then you could find out.
Yeah, I wouldn't do brands, but there's, there's various different means.
It's out there, but.
I mean, we could tell, we could tell the citizens that the, the meters are old, they are prone to not be accurate, we need.
No.
In the future, no, okay, wrong words, get it, I get it, but we need, if, if we were going to remove them. We need to have a reason why they don't.
Technology.
I agree, I don't wanna say they're not accurate. Someday down the road, they won't be accurate, they're accurate right now.
They're perfect right now.
Yes, I agree, um, I don't know, okay.
All right, but, but overall, the public information notice.
Well, so, I'm sorry. The format of the meeting, when I read that originally, I thought it was a, a little backwards. I thought that we should have a general overview of the project first, so that the citizens knew what the heck we were talking about. And then they could be informed to go to the stations and maybe ask pointed questions. As opposed to go in there, oh, I didn't realize we were doing that, what's it mean to me?
Question, I'm sorry, it's just me.
I thought it may be more beneficial to flop that and do the general overview first, tell people what this is all about, how we're gonna proceed. And then they could go to their station and say, hey, okay, let's look at me and.
Then we'll pull it back together.
That's what I kind of alluded to, that when, when I welcome everybody, explain what's going on and.
Yeah, that would be the general overview.
Okay, then we're on the same page.
Yes.
All right.
You're gonna do a general overview first.
Yep.
And then station, and then question answers if we need to.
And, and, you know, kind of a little breakdown on each, why each station is here, you know, to, the fire department. To ensure that fire protection will be adequate, you know, and you will understand, if you have questions, contact the fire department, you know.
But you could even say, if you have any questions, ask at the station if they don't get the an, the answers, we're gonna come back together and talk again.
You know, they will follow, will follow, come back to a question and answer.
Reconvening in questions and answers.
Okay.
Yep, and maybe at that time, we'll have a designated person from each group, because if they had questions, we don't want to gather them up. They can just say, GMB, we had one question, or maybe Mid-Atlantic Utilities, they'll probably be hit the hardest, probably. But, you know, if they have a question that is brought up, that, you know, they feel should be universal with everybody. You know, they can, they can, you know, each of them have comments, and if the fire company says, you know, everybody's happy with our plans. You know, that sort of thing, so.
All right, any other concerns with that?
And you're just mailing this to the seventy-five property owners?
Yes, there may be a couple that kind of, um, front the road, but are, are not address wise, not there.
Well, I'm a Mattis.
Exactly, I went through, and that leads, that leads me into what, um, Kalina's already compiled a list of. Uh, the property owners' names and addresses, um, I've been going through it now, um, which will lead me into this, this last part of this, but. Um, I'm going through and checking it, she's been marking them on, uh, the map, the state highway map and, and black marker. Uh, to kinda just look and make sure we're not missing anybody, and then I'm also going through which, and getting the parcel numbers. For each of the properties, because that is, um, in, gonna be in the memo, uh, where is it? Basically, property access agreement for each, each individual, uh, uh, each individual, um, property owner. Which I, I, Dave, I used you as an example, just cuz you're, you're, you're a property owner and you front the property, so I have a draft of that.
I reviewed it thoroughly.
So that's why I need the, uh, the parcel numbers and stuff, so. I, my goal again is to have these access agreements for everybody to, to hand out at the meeting. And if anybody that's not there, we'll obviously mail them after, after the meeting.
So I, I read through this thoroughly, as did my wife, just to make sure. And, um, so I'm assuming the legalese that you have in there was run through Michelle or will be, to make sure those words were correct, okay?
I, I see it now.
But, and the only other thing I had, um, Gary, was I did find a, just a, three or four typos, and I'll just give them to you, so you can. Update your sheet, but other than that, I thought it was clear and concise, and I, I, I didn't necessarily see anything that, uh. Gave me the willies or anything like that, so. I'll, I'll provide you this.
Okay. So that's pretty much all I have for that, that information meeting. Um, again, we've got the, uh, scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-third, seven P M, Windsor Fire Department.
Do we have, wanna have any refreshments or just, just informational meeting?
Haven't thought that far.
Okay.
It'd kinda be nice.
We can have coffee.
Coffee and cookies.
Coffee and cookies.
Coffee and cookies.
I try and love some cookies.
That's fine.
All right, everybody good? All right, Leaf Machine Sweet Street Sweeper. Wanna go ahead?
Me?
Yeah.
You asked to put it on the agenda, didn't you?
Uh, I did, the last time, I didn't.
No, she's skate parked this time.
Well, I just think that.
I put it on there, um, because, um, we need some direct, Director Myers needs some direction, uh, from the council. Of what, where we're heading with this, what we wanna do, and the reason being that, um, we wanna keep the, the new dump truck on schedule to be put in service. So there's some options that, that we talked about, I believe, of, that would affect how we wanna do it. Um, and I, Wayne has had a, has dealing with family, personal family matters, so he's not here this evening, but. Yeah, there's, what do we, what do we want to do with the Leaf Machine slash Street Sweeper? Um, I did reach out to, um, two, two folks at M M L. The second, the second gentleman, and his name's escaping me right now. Confirmed that highway user revenue can be used, it's an acceptable use. However, that would not be my vote to use that money on that, but it can be, it can be used. But you're, you're talking probably at least two hundred thousand dollars for a street sweeper. Of the cal, of the, to get what we need, and how, how often are we gonna sweep, sweep the streets, say that ten times?
Once a week, two hundred thousand.
Every day.
Look at, if you purchase a separate, if you purchase a separate street sweeper, you have a, a very expensive vehicle. You have to insure it, you have to have somebody driving it. Maintaining it, uh, insurance on it, I think I mentioned that, um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a large investment now. I think there are options that, that Director Myers is looking at, that, um, there's a, and I don't know all the details, I apologize for that, but. There's a hook system that can be used on the new truck we purchased, that can change. Load and unload the back of the truck, so you could, you could unload the bed. And put a, a vac system, not a sweeper, but a vac system on there, and this, this, uh. Hook system would need to be purchased now, so that they can set, go ahead and continue setting up the, or soon, set up, setting up the rest of the truck. To get into service, you still then have, so you'll have the cost of that, uh, hook system, and then you'd have the cost of whatever. You would mount on the back in terms of a, a vacuum type scenario where they could, um, that, and that's, that's more of a leaf machine. Back machine, not, not a street sweeper.
Well, let me ask you a question, I mean, I have seen street sweepers come through our town, so where are those street sweepers coming from?
State Highway does thirty-one.
Mm-hmm, right, so, I mean, will they continue to do that?
Lehigh come in before too, but that's, that's a special event like carnival, usually the week of the carnival.
Mm-hmm.
Or pre, before the week.
So, so we're still gonna have that, right, as far as sweeping the street, we'll still have the, what, what we already have in, in process now.
But that, you're, that, you're talking May, and probably, I bet fifty percent of the time, you add State Highway, theirs is broken down.
Yeah, we can't control, we can't control when State Highway's gonna just the state road, they're not gonna do the, the town roads.
But the main, the main concern here, though, was the storm drains, correct? It was.
Yes.
So Wayne could also purchase a small, like, uh, vacuum for just the storm drain. Like, not advertise it to residents saying, hey, we're going to come collect, still do the bags. But just get a small, what, forty, fifty thousand dollar, um, you know, small. Um, but he could get something smaller that he could go around, do the storm drains, make sure they're clear. That satisfies that issue.
Well, I think it needs to, the storm drains are the, the priority in my opinion.
Sure.
But the curbing leading to the storm drains filled with leaves is, is the problem, right? So Wayne can suck up the, the storm drain, and all the leaves above it, the first range is gonna wash it down and clog it, we really, I mean, if you took a look at, at Church Street. You know, this past fall, it was both sides, the curbs were just polluted with leaves the, the whole season. And, you know, the storm drains then were, were totally covered up with, with leaves, so that really needs to be done. Probably several times a year, but for sure, in the fall, probably a couple times. You know, so it needs to be big enough to be, I'm not worried about the, the homeowner's property like we were, I'm looking at it, it's gotta be at least big enough to be able to suck the curbs.
And that's why I figured about forty, fifty thousand dollars, cuz you could get ones that are like a thousand, but those are usually like landscaping companies.
The thing that you're talking about, Gary, for the truck, the hook system and all that, is that something that is big enough to be able to do the curbs? So it's a batch.
A hook system is merely a device that would go on the, on the, the truck.
Right.
To change, to take the, the, the bed off in the back and put a vac system. Or, or a, a dumpster or container system on the back, it's, it's the, the device to unload and unload.
Okay, so is there a device, is there a device that we could mount onto the back of that truck that would do that job?
The vacuuming of the streets?
Yes.
I believe there is, I believe there is.
He, he was saying there's like thirty different attachments or something.
Yeah, I think that's something that can mount, I think that's something that can mount on the truck without the use of the, of getting this hook. This hook system's probably twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars.
Well, I, I just feel like we need to get some pricing on the different options that we have before we can really go forward, I mean, we've got.
I think, I think Wayne's point was we need direction before we go and get pricing.
Yeah, I, I feel like the bagging.
I don't wanna send him on a goose chase, pricing down ten different things when we don't know what we want.
Because, to Gary's point, there is, like, if you just say strictly street vacuuming. There's the hook system, there's a full tow behind, there's, there's ones that just go on the, the hitch. And then you can vacuum from there, it, there's, and it really goes down to grade of what do you wanna do? Do you wanna offer it to residents, do you wanna just do this, the, the, um, the, the curbs?
I mean, I felt, I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I felt like it worked, once we took a little while for everybody to get used to, but once we explained to people, you're gonna have to bag. And put the bags out, and we'll come get them, I felt like that worked fine.
Right, but to, but to the point.
Then we still need to do this other thing.
Falls in the road and sidewalks and ends up in the gutter and ultimately ends up in the, in the inlets, there's.
We're still gonna have to address that.
Responsible for the roads, you know, I mean, we are, I mean, some people may, may not, but.
We can't count on that.
I think, well.
Roads are our responsibility.
Wasn't there also an issue about the ordinance of, uh, we were talking about like snow, um, removal, how we have to remove snow within twenty-four hours? But we didn't really have an ordinance for leaves in the sidewalk. Because what I'm, what I'm imagining here is if we were able to say, hey, um, I need the sidewalk, uh, swept up and, and. Um, bagged up, that we might be able to stop a majority of those issues.
Well, I agree with that, because, you know, like on Main Street, there's an awful lot of rental properties there and nobody's getting out there and.
But nobody's also getting, you know, there's no, um, talking to, to the owner saying, hey, this needs to be cleaned up, there's no ordinance to say, hey, you're, you're required to clean this up.
I agree that we need maybe to have an ordinance for something like that.
It might help a little bit, I, I don't think it's gonna eliminate it totally.
It's gonna be very problematic to enforce that, I mean, snow happens, and it stops.
And you got twenty-four hours, leaves today, you rake them, tomorrow, you rake them.
True.
You know, I, I don't.
I think it's just enforcement on something like that.
But you could say that the sidewalks have to be free and clear of debris.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm not ticking on myself, but there's, the church next door has four huge trees, where do you think all their leaves end up?
Yeah.
On my sidewalk, which is like an entire block.
The south part of the side, and every time the wind, and that's another thing that is different with snow too. It's the wind blows, and if it's wet, they stay where they're put.
It's the wind blows, and if it's wet, they stay where they're put, and if it's dry, they're, you know, in Atlee Ridge.
Um, the issue with, uh, Dave, the, the issue with Church Street, was that because people were actually raking, uh, leaves to the curb expecting the town to pick it up?
Not this year, I don't believe, no, not, not this year.
There's a lot of trees.
Just a lot of trees.
A lot of trees, and they, and they end up in the curb, and I, and I, I understand most people are reluctant to get out in the street. And I, I get that, so, you know, it, it really becomes a town issue.
Right, and, and wasn't there a health concern?
The current, the current, uh, one does, uh, kick up a lot of dust, so there is OSHA compliant ones that kick up the first-
So that's the emphasis for finding a new sort of vehicle to get it, okay, so we, I guess, is, uh, I guess Wayne's looking for parameters on what he should start to look for.
Yes.
And so, two hundred thousand is out of the question, are we saying that?
Yeah.
I was gonna suggest we put a pencil in a hundred thousand dollars on the capital projects. You know, even if it's not this year, you know, put it in somewhere in the five-year plan. And I'm not sure, sure, it has to be done right away, the sooner the better, sure, but we need to take a look at the budget too. And we also have M M L convention coming up, and we might be able to see some options there.
It sounds to me like if we get the, the, uh, accessories for the current, or the truck that we're potentially getting, or we, we're getting.
Well, that's the hook system, just to be clear, 'cause that, that hook system is pretty costly.
Right, so it sounds like we're at a hundred, a hundred grand already. So, I mean, huh, how much more are we gonna, how many more accessories are we gonna add that makes this thing?
But, but if, if, if we sit here and say, you know, if we're only going, we're not gonna offer it to residents like we have in the past, we just do certain roads, church, I think Maine are the two big concerns, um, then he might be able to get a smaller version that, you know, would work for just two, three streets.
Yeah.
Um, but it might only be ten thousand dollars, you know?
I, I, I just have an issue with just doing parts of the street, certain streets, because I guarantee you're gonna hear more complaints about not doing mine, but you're doing my neighbor's.
Yeah, I think we need to do the ones that need to be done, whatever.
That's how currently Hampstead, Tawny Town, and, and I think it was Westminster when Wayne had the guide. He said most of the, most of the towns in Carroll County that have a vacuum system do it for town roads, not for residents. And it is only certain roads.
Should be, be doing State Highway.
No.
Right.
Right.
But like Lambert gets pretty bad.
Sure.
Yeah.
There's, there's storm drains on Lambert that you wouldn't know there was a storm drain there unless you knew there was a storm drain there, you cannot see it.
Which is another reason why people don't wanna walk out into the roadway to try and sweep it.
Right.
Is there an option that makes that, okay, so the two hundred sounds astronomical, but is there an option that we, um, that allows us to utilize that vehicle for more than just leaves? I know, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned, um, doing something like that, finding something that had more capabilities, so the two hundred doesn't sound like, and I don't know, is it, I mean, I've seen streets, street sweepers and street washers and stuff like that, I'm sure.
That might be what, um, Wayne might be looking for, if that's the direction, Wayne might be able to contact that company and say, hey, what are the all the attach- they might have something for summers that they can use, um, a salt attachment for winter.
If we told Wayne, yes, yes, just that, you know, 'cause we have a, a salt spreader, which is, well, is the, basically the flatbed truck with a spreader on the back, right?
They might have an attachment for that, they, they might have a power washer for, you know, certain-
We're spending a lot of money, but I mean-
I'm sure he could probably, he could probably come with a list and say, yes, this might be sixty thousand dollars, but it will give us year-round use, this is what we could do in the fall, this is what we can do in the winter.
I don't wanna send him on a wild goose chase, but I mean, I think if we sent him on a, with a limit, with a-
That's pretty pointed.
Yeah, if we say, okay, here's our, our max spend is one twenty-five, what can we get for that? Doesn't mean he's gonna spend the one twenty-five.
Well, I think he just, he's really just looking for general direction
Yeah.
as to what to start pricing specifically. If we, if we, or if we're Bennett, or, or seriously want a designated street sweeping unit, then give him the direction. If you were looking at something that, that options that he can, we can make the, the new truck, uh, uh, multi, multipurpose, then, then that's, then that's the direction, whether that, and then he'll know whether that would involve this hook system or whether there's other things, um, attachments or things that can be, uh, purchased or used on the truck, would require that or not.
Well, I think that was the main concern of Wayne's, because that hook system needs to be hooked up to the chassis,
Now.
and now that we have just a chassis,
Right.
you know, he needs to go no-go for that.
Wants to find out, yeah.
Is that what that's, he wants to be able to get that truck put into use as soon as possible.
Sure.
So if we, if we're going the hook system, we need to kinda know that sooner than later, sooner, so that we can get that process going and, and get the rest of the truck, truck built for-
I think that would be a perfect solution, yeah.
Well, not to complicate this any further, but I mean, we have ano- another development, um, housing development that we're gonna be taking care of soon. Um, they don't have any trees right now, but, I mean, are we, we ma- we're maintaining the roads in, uh, in Snyder, right?
We will, not currently, but we will.
But I mean, we will, soon.
Right.
And it, what, five years, we'll be, you know, taking care of the leaves there, and my development is, our tree, well, our trees are pretty mature now, so, I mean, I think that we should be looking, what are we looking at a truck, ten years' usage? Ten, uses, usage of the new truck.
Truck was two thousand eight, I think?
Two, two thousand eight, yeah, we should, we get at, at least-
That's fourteen years, so if you, if you buy a truck that's fourteen-year lifespan, and we only get this much capability out of it, 'cause that's all we need today, then we're kinda looking at the same issue in another few years. You've, you, you know, you understand what I mean there?
The, the dump truck, I would say, gets used less than other trucks, so if we can get more use out of it.
Doesn't have a lot of mileage on it.
Yeah, I guess what I meant was, in terms of capabilities of what we can do with the accessories that we add to any truck.
Sure, sure.
I know that two hundred thousand sounds ridiculous, but it might not be ridiculous when we, we're looking at the full picture of what we might need it to do in, in five short years.
Well, my main concern about the s- street sweeper, the two hundred thousand one, is the maintenance on that. Because that truck might only last, you know, ten years as well. And you might only use it a couple times a year.
Yeah, I was looking more at the dollars. You know, uh-
Well, the same way, dollars, what are the maintenance on that, I'm sure-
No, no, I mean, I'm not saying specifically the street sweeper.
Okay.
I'm saying whether, the accessories for the truck that we're getting.
Okay.
That two hundred dollars kinda shocked everybody, me included, but when you look at what capabilities we might need our truck that we're getting to spend, that two hundred thou- thousand dollars might not be outrageous.
So I'm not getting a, a general feel-
What do you want him to do?
Uh, look, have we looked at the options, uh, accessory options for the, for the truck?
Yes.
Specific street sweeping unit.
Right.
Yes.
I just think that should be good enough for, to get him going.
Alright, thank you. Skate park, discussion and upgrade.
Okay, well, I was the one that asked to have that put on, um, because we had just gotten another, uh, note from Mike that, uh, it's time to get those grants in for the park money. And I just know that we had tossed around some ideas for the skate park. I mean, Wayne, I think it was Wayne that even had an idea of maybe taking the skate park and moving it up by where the tennis courts are, if there was room for it up there, um, so, and then we talked about maybe getting some lighting down there, or fixing the parking, or whatever, you know, landscaping, any of those things. So I don't know, um, you know, how to exactly go about doing all that, or what is, you know, but this is the time, if we wanna put some ideas out there and, uh, try and get that funding started for that. I just felt like that's a several-year cycle, so it'll be a while before we can get that funding again if we wanna do something.
Don't we have that allocated? We, we get-
Every two years?
We get, we're eligible for P O S funding every two years, this year we are eligible for it. Um, you have-
It's Lions Club, though, right?
No, no, this is, we, we're eligible for new, for new P O S money.
Okay.
Or for, to apply for new, new P O S money.
Sure.
Thing is, you have to have a scope of work and a specific job and prices and everything, you can't just go in there and ask them for a hundred grand. You know, you have to have projects with scopes of work, specifics, what you wanna do, get estimates, and get it lined up so you can apply. So, yeah, we get it, basically, it's, it's four, it's four-
Four municipalities, one year, four the next.
Four municipalities the next year, so it just runs on a cycle.
You can accumulate of-
What do we have, I mean?
Three to five years or something, I think.
Yeah, so, um-
But no, I, I had suggested years ago, when we started talking about developing the park where the lagoons were, to move the skate park over. And we just never have gotten any funding for that.
We did look at moving, um, I actually went out and measured the park, the skate park, and went over and, and looked at, um, putting it adjacent to, uh, the basketball courts. Um, the issue that we run into there is, the most important thing is, we now know because of survey, where the force main runs from Atlee Ridge to, to the plant, and that force main comes through there. And when you put in, when you would put in the, the same size pad that we have is on the skate park over here, over there, it would be over top of it, at least a portion of it, so you don't wanna put anything over top of the force main. And then you have grade issues there, you know, you have to have a, you know, basically, I can't remember the dimensions, I wanna say it's sixty by eighty, or maybe sixty by hundred, sixty by eighty sounds right. So you need a perfectly flat, level piece of concrete, which means then you have grading that you have to do to make it, uh, in that location. Wayne and I were talking today about where else, where else can we, where else can we put it? Um, we, we, we got the stormwater facility going in to the left of gear down by the railroad tracks, so you, you don't wanna put it down in that area. Um, you, putting it down in the lagoon by itself right now would be kind of, if we had a whole park scheme and a whole, whole layout, then that might fit into it eventually, but I think sticking it down there by itself in a fenced situation is, is probably not ideal.
No.
Um, you know, there's, there's, we're kinda limited as to where we can move it. Um, we're also looking at whatever we do down, down at the location that we're at now, you gotta keep in mind that the town owns some of that property there, but we don't own all the fields. That's, that's Lehigh's property. So, um, 'cause I'm sitting there thinking, why don't we move it over to the ball field, no one's using ball field, and it's like, we don't own the property. You know, you forget that there's a, there's a line between where the town owns there, where the current, um, Rooks Meadow Spring is, which we're talking about possibly revamping and getting back online, and what's gonna be involved with the treatment, water treatment there, what we're gonna need there. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, we don't want anything, we don't wanna do anything that would jeopardize potentially a water source and, and a water treatment facility down there. You know, so, I, there's just, there's a lot of things to, to discuss and, and think about and plan for. There's, there doesn't appear to be any simple, easy solution, I'd love to sit there and say, well, we can, we have this nice area where we can just move it and, and redo it and have it in a better location, it's, it's not an ideal location, um, but-
What about the Lions Club part?
You mean offering-
It'd have to be a small skateboard.
And it would be tight, I think.
Oh, you got, you got a fair amount down there below.
Yeah, but I've seen kids have like flag football down there, and if you take that, you, you ruin that walking.
I don't know how popular it would be with the neighborhood either.
I mean, we can, we can look at the, at the footprint there.
When, when's the deadline on that?
Yeah, when's the deadline?
I don't think that the P O S deadline is until, um, more towards summer, more towards summertime.
Have we gotten the figures for it?
For what?
What we, what our share is.
Uh-uh, not yet.
No?
I haven't seen it.
Like last year or year before?
Let me check my email, I think Mike- I didn't see anything from him.
'Cause all four get the same.
Is that leaving, do I gotta leave?
No, just go on the bottom, get your email, I think.
Mr. Mayor, there was a, uh, gosh, this is probably, can't believe I'm saying this, five or six years ago, there was a proposal for the lagoon area with the fields.
Mm, that's what I just mentioned.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It was, it was, it was like a couple of design ideas from the, what was it, it was-
Right.
University of Maryland Powell's program.
Right, and that just, is that a-
Well, I, I tried to get, and it, uh, uh, a gentleman that, uh, was the founder of Jiffy Lube International-
Yeah, yeah.
To donate five hundred thousand dollars, that we could take that to the state of Maryland and get a bond for five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
To start a million-dollar project, and it just didn't, didn't go through.
Yeah.
So, the amount and the applica- this is what from Mike Reynolds, the amount and application due date will be announced most likely in the spring or early summer. So they haven't announced the, the amounts or, or that one, when they do the amounts, then they'll say, they'll give you your, your deadline, submit it, so. Late spring, early summer is what it looks like.
And then see if the Public Works guys can take a look down below the pump station on Atlee, to see if there's any open space there for a-
That's the other place that did come up.
A bas- basketball, for the young man?
I was thinking for the, um, skate park. Down, down where the, you have the, uh, where the pump station is, and then you have a, an incline, short incline, and a flat area there where, to the butterfly trail.
The only issue there is you have the, uh-
Wet.
Disc golf.
Yeah, you have disc golf there, and it is, it is wet, very wet.
Well, I think some of the disc golf is on the other side of thirty-one over there by the skate park too, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah, it's both.
It's both, yeah.
Seven holes over there.
Lehigh paid for them.
Yeah, so.
With the, the discussion about lights, was that to give more usage, I know they mentioned lights.
And, and security.
Tech, terror crime.
Terror, terror crime and-
So if we kept it where it is, I mean, lights seem, that seems feasible.
Well, lights are, lights are feasible, but definitely want them on dust, you know, you want them on timers so they're not on all night.
Yeah, somebody already commented on that.
Gary, another thought with a skate park, what we have is all flat, but it wouldn't have to be. Some of it could be flat, some of it could be a, a bowl or, you know, a natural, so that we wouldn't have, I mean, there are just some options. It might be a little more expensive than just a slab, but if we have, if we have the funding-
Oh my God, you'd get people from up and down the East Coast if you did it right.
Yeah. And also whether or not we would need fencing, whether or not fencing is really needed.
Westminster's isn't fenced anymore, it used to be, but it isn't anymore.
Just save a little cost there, and, and usually it gets beaten up and-
Yeah, I look, I drive by, um, Sykesville's, but I can only see it from thirty-two, I haven't been, I haven't seen it up close, I can't. Don't know for sure if that's fenced or not, I see people there a lot.
Well, I used to drive by the one, um, Mount Airy has one on, uh, twenty-seven, I used to drive by that, I mean, that thing's packed, all the, you know? I think that is fenced in.
It is, yeah, but I mean, that's also in between like two schools, that's like, that park is like a meeting space, so. Um, that's why it gets, it gets great use, usage, where's the one in Sykesville?
Um, I think it's on the Howard County side, actually, 'cause I, as I, as I come, uh, north on thirty-two, it's on, it's, when you cross the bridge, you can look down and see it, um, to the, to the left, I'm heading towards, towards Sykesville. So if you come in through Sykesville, I think you gotta cross the river.
Okay.
And then head towards thirty-two.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's up on, kinda on, up against the hill, I haven't seen a close-up.
Yeah, yeah, that's a huge park, yeah.
And, you know, let's see, we have another newsletter coming out, April, right? April, another newsletter in April. Because the first one was semi-designed by a young man, um, many, thirty years ago.
Yeah.
And, uh, actually, my son was after me for years to get a skate park instead of skateboarding in the street everywhere, and I ended up building a half-pike in the backyard one year, so, um-
We got an engineer then.
Huh?
Said we got an engineer then.
Oh, it was a long summer, man. It was a long summer, man. But it was built. I never got on it because I didn't want any broken bones. But Jeremy got a lot of use out of it. But, um, yeah, there was a young man that we incorporated his ideas, and I think he even had some friends. I can't tell you the boy's name, but.
I think it was, uh, the Peters?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ben Peters.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. And, you know, I thought maybe we put it in the next newsletter for any ideas to submit them to the town.
For design?
Or ideas.
Or just general?
Just general ideas on either whether it's a skate park or, you know, whether or not they would like to be able, because right now, I, I don't know whether any bikes get in there or not, but there's no place for any kind of bike, you know, biking, you know, jumps or anything, but, um, wouldn't have to be just strictly skateboarding or something or rollerblading or, you know, a combination.
That would be ideal for the lagoon.
Huh?
That would be ideal.
Oh, yeah, I thought about that too. You know, I mean, all you got to do is insert around.
They have, um, they actually have one in, um, some section of the Tapsco Valley. It's a, it's a bike course.
Yeah.
With jumps and ramps and everything for bicycles.
And you're talking mostly dirt.
Yeah. It's not very big, but it's, it's, it's pretty, uh, I haven't been to it. I pulled it up online.
And if we ever get funding for it, and I, I think there's going to have to be a town, county project to get the park really going. And so, um, but, but, you know, we could design, you know, that would be a heck of a course to bring some dirt in. I'm sure we could get dirt donated, probably.
That's the one good thing about, about that is, is the BMX stuff and the bike stuff is typically pretty basic.
Yeah.
I mean, you build some.
And, and if we got funding for it, we level it off.
And grading for the most part and that kind of thing. But the other thing keeping on too is that with the lagoon in the immediate, next year and a half, it's probably going to be material and equipment storage for the contractor.
Yeah.
Because it's fenced and it's, it's an ideal situation, not to prevent something long, longer term planning. It's, it's a great, it would be a great area for that.
And, and check, see how long we can keep funding. I know when we built the, uh, upgraded the Lions Club Park, we had like three, I think I combined three grant, grants that had been left over. And some, I, I want to say it was like twelve years that we had had little.
Or you do it in stages like we did across the street or something like that.
See how long we can accumulate.
So I guess it sounds like there's, um, the impetus to relocate the skate park at somewhere that may be incorporated into the lagoon area or something. However, those things all sound like they're a couple of years off be, for lots of reasons. So in the meantime, um, I don't think we want to let our current skate park go derelict, because it's, it's, it's kind of happened a couple of times where it, it got pretty bad and Wayne and crew had to go down and do some fencing stuff and all, and so we don't want to totally treat it like the proverbial redheaded stepchild. So we need to show it some love a little bit, um, because it is, it is, it should be utilized, it can be utilized. So I don't know what it currently needs today or, um, you know, what would help make the, the area a little, uh, more inviting to people. I don't want to throw a lot of, you know, good money at it, but we need to, we need to keep it so it's presentable and that people feel like it can be used and it should be used.
Yeah, well, I, I agree with that. I mean, because it's there and we've had it for a long time. I know when I took my son down there, you know, it wasn't, I mean, he had fun down there and stuff, but, um, that was it, just that one little pad there. And it wasn't lit at night, so we didn't go down at night or anything like that. And you're down there in the heat of the day in the summer, there's not any shade or anything like that. I don't know, I was, if, if it's not going to stay there, there's no point in putting a lot of landscaping around it because, so you kind of have to make a decision. Are you going to move it or are you going to keep it? You know, and if you're going to keep it, then you got to work with it. If you're going to move it, then you got to make those plans. That's why I wanted to bring it up, because unless you talk about it and hash it out, it just keeps getting pushed down the road and nothing will happen to it.
Is it usable? I mean, if we did the maintenance on it, would it be usable? I mean, we don't have broken concrete where you can't use or ask for.
I believe it's usable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's usable.
Fence has, it's seen better days. I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, the fence could either come down or it could be replaced. You know, you could, you could replace some of the, possibly replace some of the equipment or upgrade some of the equipment within the same footprint. Again, the, you know, I think the consensus is that we want to get it to a better location, but like you said, it's more, that's more of a long-term plan. But in the interim, like you said, we, what we can do to keep it viable.
Is the fence needed? Like, is, is there any problem with us just taking down the fence?
I don't know if it's required or not.
So I, I, I don't think it's required because new parks now don't have the fencing. However, in the location where it is and it's kind of isolated down there, I worry if we take the fence down, will stupid things happen? Somebody will go pull their car up on it while, you know, or take, take motorcycles on it or.
Do, do something stupid that.
Or change their oil.
One benefit is when it floods, it, the, the fence stops the leaves and the sticks because it, it has done that and it's been a few years ago. But, um, it did stop.
It's a break.
All that. You had to clean up around the outside, but you didn't have to clean up inside. So, I mean, there is that advantage being it, being down there pretty much in a flood, flood plain.
I think unless the fence is a safety issue, you know, if it was bent up and kids are going to fall on it and poke their eyes out or something, you know, was it better just to leave it for the, the, the time being? I, I, I wonder how, how much it would cost if, to put up some lights down there.
Yeah, that's a big thing I think could help is some lighting.
I do know there, there was, I think it was talk about around here, um, with the LED lights, sometimes there's grants and stuff. But do you go through all the work of putting a light up in two or three years?
Well, I mean, a couple of years, if we got a couple of years out of it, is, is, that's not horrible. And, and.
Probably be more like two or three years.
Because my, my only concern is if you have to put a meter in there, run electric lines.
I can check on that there.
There's electric that goes back to the.
There was electric that went back.
Station stand at one point.
Well, I mean, the pump, the pump.
And the Rooks Meadow.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a resident who commented reading the agenda with a concern about light. So we, we have, I don't, that's why I'm guessing it's somebody who was in sight of the, of the park. So we do have to make sure that if we get something, it's something that can go off and isn't going to be.
Oh, yeah.
Also be directed.
It's not going to be those, uh.
Exactly, exactly.
It's not like ball field.
Right, conscious of the neighbors room if we decide to do lighting.
I think if anything, it probably would be like the one out there, kind of dim.
Yeah.
I mean, bright enough you could see, but not like.
Well, we can put them on timers too. That's, that's not a big deal. Because you don't want people down there all night anyway.
No, no, but, you know, in the summer, in the evenings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Sure.
And if it wasn't overly expensive to put up a couple of lights, it may be worth doing that.
Do a short-term investment and see what happens in the long term.
Right. So is there anything other, well, because we got, we'll put some kind of scope together, some estimate together if we're going to apply and, and for, for POS. You know, lighting is, is, is a good op, I mean, that's one option.
What about the paving on it?
The condition of the paving?
Condition of the paving.
I haven't been down there in a while. I, I can go down there and look at it between now and, and our next meeting, and we can talk about it again at the next meeting.
I think we'd be hearing about it if.
Yeah.
If it was broken up.
As a former skateboarder myself, I, there's nothing worse than like gravelly paving.
Is there any danger to us doing something now and then wanting to come back in three years and move it over to the lagoon?
You'd have to get permission.
I mean, but we can't probably move other than the light, the money's gone.
But remove your space.
If you're moving. In other words, if you, that's, well, it's not so much moving it, it's we, oh, we wanted X dollars for this thing this year, now two years later, we, forget about that, we're not using that park anymore, we're going to make a new one over here now. Well, wait a minute, we just gave you money for a skateboard park.
So like, does it ruin our chances of, right?
Yeah, does that, could, could we make some improvements out of a line in our budget rather than, and do something else for the POS money this time? I just don't want us to spend a few thousand dollars on that and then in three years we need a lot of money in there.
My thought was if we replaced, if we replaced, um, like some equipment with POS money, we could move that equipment to the new location.
Right.
There might be.
You might have to get permission to, because it's, it's not going to be the, the scope of.
Right.
Project.
Now paving, if you redo paving, you're going to have to put new paving in.
Yeah, yeah.
The light, more than likely, you're not going to be able to move, are you possibly?
Maybe, yeah.
Well, we have, we have potential, the, a basketball court of some kind for Atlee Ridge that could become the POS project if the landscape lightings were, I mean, if the lighting for the skate park was reasonable, maybe we could find another budget line to throw a little bit of money at it.
I wouldn't think that it would be unreasonable.
Yeah, I, and we could also, I think you can do.
So we wouldn't impact the POS money, that's all.
The application.
Yeah, you'd have more than one project.
Yeah, you could do lighting and, and some minor things at the skate park and then a, a, a basketball court or something at, at Atlee.
And you got the playground money every year, and that's a hundred percent.
That's, that's the community parks and playground?
Yes.
Yeah, that much is due, CPP can be applied for any year, but we currently have an award for the park at Main.
Right.
In seventy-five that needs to be used, which we're doing that, or getting that, trying to do that. Applications for CPP are usually due in late August.
There's no open, open space at either Blue Ridge or Snyder's, is there? For, you know, even a small tot lot?
I don't believe so, it's Neater Summit. No. Well, Atlee, or, um, Atlee already has a tot lot.
Yeah.
Or a play lot.
Right. And that's not, I mean, that didn't, didn't take up a lot of room.
No. And we redid that surface since I've been here. We put, we put the, uh.
Right, the rubberized.
Right, yeah, rubberized surface in there for that.
I don't think, I don't think Atlee's going to have a whole lot of room to do that. And I, I mean, not Atlee, uh, Snyder.
That's why.
No, I don't think there's room in Snyder's. The topography is.
And it's so.
Yeah, the topography is tough there.
Be one nice slot.
So it was Atlee.
Maybe you could put one of your skateboard thing, you put your BMX thing out there.
Yes.
So possibly look at maybe two different, um, two different projects, okay?
I have another, um, one to, that, just to get on everybody's radar, the, um, the town owns the property where the Atlee House Spring House is. And that needs some flood control because all the money that the New Windsor Heritage spent restoring the spring house is in danger of, you know.
Getting washed away.
Getting, you know, a lot of it getting up underwater because there's, there's no way to control the water there anymore because it's a spring. But that's, you know, that's another one that could maybe could be part of something, you know, and I think that, um, that could be a nicer little area too, because we're talking about that whole swath of land down there someday being sort of, sort of a continuous park. So if we do pieces of it along the way with some of these little dribs and drabs of money.
Could the, um, skate park be moved over to that area?
Is that a flood plain there? Well, I was, I don't think, there's the room, the ri, the ri, the location where you have room off of gear is towards the railroad tracks, and that's where that's, that regional, uh, that stormwater facility that the county's working on is going to be. So we don't really do the full parameters of that yet. That was another possibility because it's flat. It is flat. There's, there is that lot, I'm pretty sure we own it, to the, between the pump station and the bed and breakfast, the old bed and breakfast.
Yeah, the church, that the church retreat house, yeah.
I think we own that.
But if you're going to, if you're going to build up the spring.
What, Atlee House?
Just really flood control.
I doubt there's too much there.
There's enough to put that skate park there.
Yeah.
If we own it.
But you got parking?
You got the tennis lot, tennis.
Well, no, this is that, this would be off of, off of gear.
Yeah.
You could park on the other side, right, of the lane going into gear, even though that's eventually going to be, that they're parked.
Yeah, you could, you could put some head and parking in there, gravel, easy.
Yeah, just a gravel thing.
Uh, let me see if we own that. I, I think we own that.
What is it, One Water Street?
Huh?
What is that, One's Water Street?
The address? I, I don't know. Spring House Skate Park.
Like that.
Refreshments right there.
Could go, you know, bathe your wounds in the South for Springs and.
Everything old is new again.
Back in the day, you know?
That's right.
Let me see here, second.
That is a pretty neat, uh, spring house.
So really, it's the issue of flooding, so you have to find some way to.
I can get you some more detail, yeah, there, so there's, yeah.
Get it away.
Yeah, basically, and, well, there's also, there is a, I believe, a drain pipe and it's just all clogged, so I just think something better just.
They really need to pipe that out.
Yeah, need some kind of, I can get you some more information.
It's, it's been done, I don't know how many times, I guess it just probably.
There's an inlet that supposedly gets to, but I don't think it's getting there.
Yeah, it's clogged.
Pipe's small and it's clogged up.
I think it needs a bigger pipe and it's kind of like a haphazard system.
All right, well, when you're out and about, take a look at any open space that you can find, and it does have to be on town property, that's, that's the one key issue.
Detective work over here.
County GIS system, I'm in Donovan.
All right, well, you keep looking and.
We own it. I have to see how big it is out there. It's, it's, it's between, um, Main Pump Station and that Bed and Breakfast property. It cut, it butts up to Water Street.
Right. Atlee House.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's still called Atlee House, it's just, it's not the Atlee House Bed and Breakfast.
No.
It's a church retreat house.
Right.
We really own this too. Cause we really own this too.
That's the bed and breakfast? No.
No, that's the, that's a rental property.
Where's the Atlee House?
Right here.
Oh, okay, I'm with you.
That's Atlee House.
So there's a church retreat in there now?
Yeah.
What used to be Atlee House is now a church. It's, it's the church at Severn Run.
Oh, really?
To the minister a couple of times.
Three years, four years, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's, they bought it right before COVID. They had all these events planned.
That's a church retreat.
But they're starting. There was somebody just there last week and he came into the museum.
Never seen anybody there.
And it's affiliated with what denomination?
It's, I don't know what denomination, it's called the Church at Severn Run.
All right, can we do this?
It is, but, yeah.
Some other-
All right. Give it some thought.
I haven't had dinner.
Application's not due tomorrow or anything, so. All right, the only other thing I have is up at the Fountain Park, and I mentioned this probably a couple of years ago, about having a mural put on, painted on the building of Doc Gertie's house, rental property.
Not the dentist office, the other one?
The other one. Big, it's white, it's all white, no windows or anything on that side. Marion Gertie has given me approval twice, um, if everybody's in agreement to it. Frank Badavick is, um, spearheading a grant through the Carroll County Arts Council, um, to get some funding. And all we need on our part right now is a, um, agreement letter for Marion and John Gertie to sign. So, I don't know how you wanna-
I don't either.
Okay. Put the use there for a canvas, basically. I mean, but a, put a mural on there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put some thought on it.
Frank's got some ideas. I would like to see it be a competitive, you know, with local residents, schools, artists.
Nothing that's gonna put us like on the Facebook all over the place like that new thing in Boston yesterday. Did you hear about it?
It's gonna be historic.
It's gonna be historic as opposed to hysterical.
It's gonna be something just depicting some of the town history.
Frank, Frank has been working hard on this. He, he's gonna have a, uh, for the grant, you have to have a, a, a meeting. And I said maybe a work session, but he may also want to have a community meeting room. Um, he's also having a committee and our teacher, I recommended from Springdale. She's very involved. She used to live in Atlee Ridge in New Windsor, so, um, she wants to see something happen there. So whether it's a school project that they submit something, but I'd like to see it open to the public.
Yeah.
And I think you can get, I mean, that would be, and, and, you know, even the, the artists up in Frederick, I don't know if anybody has ever seen any of his work, the mural, he does bridges.
Right as you cross the bi-, bridge of Malinger Creek.
Yeah, he's done a lot of them, so, well, not somebody like that, whatever.
Those in Westminster, near one of the little pocket parks, it's just like, and it's just, it's nice.
So I think you could come up with a lot of great ideas, you know, so, that's, that's my two cents worth on that. But we need a, need a agreement, and like you say, they, they are in agreement. And they would probably like some kind of approval, but, and I don't know whether you put a time in there or this, that we maintain it.
Yeah, that's what, I'm just making this little note to my own brain.
Is, you know, if it's sold, that it can stay as is. Everybody argue with that?
Yeah.
And I'll have the names for the BZA to be voted on at the February Town Council meeting. I got two already, so I just need one more to, to agree to re-up. Anybody have anything else?
I do.
Okay.
Ah, believe it or not, I actually was looking at my summer schedule for something completely different. And I seem to recall that you created Juneteenth to be a holiday. Juneteenth would be the June work session date. So I just bring that to your attention. I, I don't know, we didn't always do it. June was always different because of the carnival and I don't know what the schedule's gonna be, but just file that away in the back of your head.
The carnival's gonna be two weeks earlier.
Oh, okay.
May twenty-third through the twenty-seventh.
We'll probably have to plan to meet on Tuesday.
You're saying that-
How come?
Because we didn't have rides for the last two years.
Yeah, I know.
And in order to get a ride company-
Oh, it's, that's their schedule.
The old one that had been here for fifty, sixty years, they booked somewhere else.
Uh, cool.
And in order to get a ride company, and we had to move it up two weeks.
Don't conflict with anybody else?
It's Tuesday through Saturday with a, I guess, Wednesday parade. But they, they're talking about changing the, the route of the parade, so that hasn't been finalized yet.
Everybody's-
So what was, what were the dates on that? What, what were the dates again?
May twenty-third through the twenty-seventh.
That's what I figured, but I, uh, I, I was looking at it and I thought of, I thought of that, so I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, it falls on a Monday this year, so we, we would just probably move to the Tuesday.
Move it to Tuesday.
January, February, we push it to Tuesday.
When's Fourth of July this year? That's not on Wednesday, is it?
Uh, Fourth of July, Tuesday.
No, where Fourth of July is?
It's a Tuesday.
Thank you, Gary.
Very degrees too, huh?
I'd rather go home. Need a motion to adjourn?
Without a motion?
I think it's done. That was it.
Do I hear a motion? I'll second then?
I'll second.
All those in favor, sing, bow, and say aye.
Aye.
So, Gary, thank you, everybody.
That was a long one.